Hundred and twelve, hundred and fifteen dollars, which goes up minimally. And then we'll establish this cafeteria plan for active employees and you can use it for your health care, your dental, your vision and that sort of thing. That's what the town's doing in doing so. Establishing this cafeteria plan for current employees and future employees eliminates the requirement that the town pay that same amount toward retiree healthcare. So this report also outlines the OPEB liability, which has been discussed at the council at numerous times. That's the liability we're looking at reducing in the long term for the town. We've already made significant contributions to it now. One point two million back in 2012. At the most recent council meeting, another two million dollars toward that. That reduces that liability to about four point four or four point six. The next savings for the town is the elimination of the employee paid member contributions. This is actually a double hit for the town and it's kind of complicated to explain. But if you've got a base salary for an employee and you're providing that employee a benefit on top of that to pay their obligation for pension, CalPur says that's part of their salary. So you've got, when they report that amount for retirement purposes, you report their base salary plus that amount that you're paying their side for. So their salary is actually reported a little bit higher. We pay member employer contributions on that higher amount. So we're kind of double paying. So this is in a way savings twice for the town. We're transferring that liability back to the employee directly and we're doing so in a five percent, seven percent swap. We're going to adjust their salary by five percent and then they're on the hook for all seven percent adjustment back to them. So there's a two percent gap there, plus the difference that the town's obligated to pay on top of that, which we save. That represents about two point six percent savings to the town. The last one is the elimination of the seventy percent salary match. This is that big ratchet that everybody's been talking about. If we do a salary, the current MOU says if we do a salary survey and this is what salaries come back at, we are obligated to pay our staff at that seventieth percentile. So we do the salary the next time, it keeps going up and up and up and up. We want to get out of that ballgame. We want our salaries based on what we think we need to repay our employees in a fair and reasonable way. Elimination of that seventieth percentile salary match is the way to achieve that. And that's what's in this current MOU. There are no separate cost of living adjustments within this MOU through the entire three-year period of time, just that five, seven swap. There's adjustments in the uniform allowance and there's adjustments in the post-certification requirements, but that's it. So overall, the fiscal impact for the town is a minimum of seven point six percent direct salary savings. Other salary savings include retirement due as evaluations. We've got reduced pension obligations to increase to the second tier. We've got reduced post-employment retirement obligations through the elimination of retiree healthcare. We've got reduced active employee healthcare costs through a reduced formulary and cost sharing in camps. And we've got reduced salary escalations through controlled salary adjustments. You've got the current MOU, the salary resolution that sets the salaries of employees, which is exactly what's in the current budget, but there are no adjustments to them at the present time. They'll be adjusted based on that tiering of the five, seven swap. And then you've got this side agreement that also needs to be ratified this evening. There's a component of this MOU that addresses retiree healthcare. There's a component within there that there's still some disagreement between the APOA and town on, and that's particularly the twenty-year vesting requirement and not that we actually pay retirees for healthcare. Side letter says, "We agree to disagree on this particular section, but there's still some details we need to work out. We've got to find out what the actual requirements are by law and then go back to the table and talk about it a little more." It doesn't affect the ratification of the rest of this MOU going forward and so it's recommended that the council adopt the attached resolution ratifying the 2013, 2016 MOU between the town of Atherton and the APOA, establishing salaries and benefits for those personnel effective October 1, 2013 through September 30, 2016, and adopt the side letter agreement as well. And then adopt the attached resolution establishing salaries for the covered positions within the APOA MOU. That concludes the staff report. I couldn't answer any more.
Thank you very much, City Manager. Nice work and nice work for all the other members of staff who've worked really hard to put this together. Any members of the council have any comments on this at this time?
I would just say that there's been a lot of good work done here in the negotiation process. I think it's ended up with everybody feeling quite good, the police, APOA feeling quite good. You know, despite the savings, I think this is a very generous contract. I think we're paying our police officers very, very well. We all will love our own police force. There are a few things in here that I would change, but you know, just like in the federal arrangement, negotiation is negotiation and sometimes you have to eat a few things to get the thing done. So I would just congratulate George on a lot of negotiation that has ended up with something that we can accept.
Questions, please, now, please?
Again, I'll echo what everybody has said and you know, it's a tremendous amount of work to get us to this point. So George, thank you for your leadership role on that, and APOA for getting us to this point. I only had, I just had one little comment that I'd like to make related to page number eleven. And it's related to all the letter here except firearm holster and chemical agent holder. Can we get rid of the word except? And we will provide the firearm holster and chemical agent.
Say it's a bullet point, the top of the page.
I agree. That's generally referred to as safety equipment. Most agencies provide that as warrants to the town, issue to the officers.
Thank you.
All right, so we're removing the word except.
Thank you.
And you're taking, what, one percent out of the salary?
I don't.
Isn't that what you agreed to, Chief?
Okay. Councilman Widmer, do you have any comments on this?
Yeah. First off, I appreciate the smoothness in which this whole negotiation went. I think we were, we were, you never anticipate how things are going to go, but I think things went extremely well and you know, as Councilmember Dobbie said, you know, negotiations is about everybody gives a little something and it's not everything that everybody wanted, but at the same time, I think everybody can say that. And that's the, when everybody feels that way, then that's actually, everybody wins and everybody loses a little bit. It's, but everybody feels good about it and that's a mark of a good negotiation. So every year, every year, there is a savings, overall, there's a savings. And I think that's a good testament to where we are. There wasn't one year that was sacrificed. And as George pointed out, there are savings that really at this point in time can't be quantified, which I think actually will do quite well for the town downstream, which has kind of been the mark for this council, that you know, we've been really trying to address issues to make sure that we have budget flexibility in the out years. And that's what we've been trying to do and some of the things we've been doing. And I think that that's what this council, this MOU also represents. So thank you.
So I just want to thank my fellow council members and for working with our city manager and working through the differences in this negotiation. But really, the leadership that City Manager Roderick has shown in this whole process in negotiating with the APOA and the leadership in the APOA negotiators have been extraordinary in this process. City Manager Roderick has brought us through the process with extraordinary detail and education and just walked us through the process in a really, really detailed manner. And thank you so much for that. Appreciate it. You know, 2011, we were in pretty bad shape. At that time, Councilmember Dobbie was mayor and we had an interim city manager and we were in pretty bad financial shape. Steps that were taken at that time to start turning the battleship around into, you know, brighter and smoother seas were taken. And then in 2012, when Councilmember Widmer was mayor, that continued. And with the hiring of city manager and Chief at Flint had been hired in 2011. And so I really think that we are on the right track here. The future really looks much brighter for Atherton with our staff, the morale of our staff is high and our police force is really at the very top level. And that's what our residents want and we expect. So I'd like to ask the council to entertain a motion to accept. Councilmember Dobbie moves and Councilmember Widmer seconds. This resolution of the City Council, the town of Atherton, ratifying memorandum of understanding between the town and the Atherton Police Officers Association. And I call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? This motion passes. Any others like, thank you all. Thank you very much. Oh, I didn't have any public comments. I was so excited. Okay, we've got to have a public comment. That's not going to make a matter of a lot.
I don't know, it makes way my vote.
Makes way your vote? Oh, my gosh. Valerie?
It's not makes way your vote because really what I want to do is thank you all. Not only do I feel that town manager has been doing a great job and has shown great leadership and professionalism, but I think the council is doing a great job and showing great willingness to allow the city manager to do his job. And I think that the overall demeanor of the council's been wonderful. The staff has been amazing. I know I speak for everybody that I personally know in Atherton, that we love our police. We want to see them happy and functioning and taking care of us. And we like having a town council and staff that is working together well. So thank you very much for all of that. And thank you, Elizabeth, for your leadership.
Thank you, Valerie. Thanks for saying that. It's a nice thing. We have more, we have more public comments.
Sorry.
We have more public comment. Yes.
I'll make a brief comment on it also. I just think that the manner in which the pension issues were addressed were particularly important. I think this is a big problem throughout the state of California. We've seen it be explosive in many cities and I just feel heartened that Atherton has taken care of it the way that we have. And we've come out with a contract that all four of you can support. And I think that the police have to feel really good about it. That was one of my big concerns from the debate last November, was that I think it was demoralizing to them and I think they really have to feel heartened. And that's good for Atherton.
Thank you. Any other members of the public seeing, oh, yes.
I'm still not clear, was there a, what was the wage increase without the benefits? Over the four years?
Five percent.
Five percent? But it was offset.
Over three years.
But it was offset.
Five percent for the four years?
Over three years.
Or five percent a year?
No, over three years.
Over three years.
And that was offset with the benefits with the.
They have to pay back seven percent per year.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah. So that's offset. Okay, we'll move on to.
Now you're going to take action again.
Redo our vote.
Do we have to redo our vote?
Yeah, because you didn't take public comment.
Well, so. Could change. The second. Aye. Okay.
Could have changed public vote.
He is such a stickler. City Attorney Connors, he really is good. So thank you. Okay, item number 20. Approval of Park Events Management Services Request for Bid, an RFB as bid. And we're going to let Community Services Director Mike Keshwati talk to us about this.
Ladies and gentlemen, members of the City Council, this item seeks City Council approval and authorization to solicit bids from qualified vendors to perform event management services for facility rentals at Holbrook Palmer Park. At the August 7th City Council Study Session, staff presented information for council review and feedback regarding policies governing the use and rental of Holbrook Palmer Park, including weddings and corporate events. We recommended a business model of contracting for services necessary to staff market, manage, and administer all activities associated with the rental and use of facilities in Holbrook Palmer Park. And also sought direction to prepare a request for bid to competitively select a qualified vendor to perform event management services. And so that is why this item is before you this evening. Based upon responses to the town's request for bid, town staff will be able to evaluate and recommend the best provider of services based upon the bids we've received. We'll be able to provide a financial analysis regarding the revenue potential from reinstating full event bookings at Holbrook Palmer Parks. And we'll also be able to review and assess the appropriateness of the current park rent fees. Since the nature of the requested services falls under the category of non-professional services, a request for bid is being utilized per the town's purchasing policy. As provided by purchasing policy, City Council has the ability to award a contract based upon best vendor criteria contained in your purchasing policy. And therefore does not have, you do not have to base your decision solely on the lowest cost bid. Accordingly, as outlined in the staff report, although cost is the single most important factor, the selection of the best qualified vendor will be based upon other factors such as background and experience of the dealer, key personnel that they're proposing for our specific project, their work program, and of course references. So that concludes staff presentation. Any questions?
Does any member of the council want to ask staff a technical or clarifying question? We'll open it up for public comments.
Yeah, one of the, I mean, many of the events, unless I, unless it was approved at the council meeting that I missed, I don't think we've approved some of these events yet that you're outlining here. I mean, we've talked about weddings in the park, we've talked about, you know, how many would be allowed, what the sizes would be. And as I say, unless it was a council meeting I missed, I don't think we've had any agreement on that yet.
We haven't initiated weddings or anything like that back at the park yet. We're waiting until we complete this process.
The other thing is, I mean, whoever is doing this, it's going to make some money. I don't think we should be paying them any kind of maintenance fee. So as far as I'm concerned, if we decide on an event, they make their money when things happen and we don't guarantee any three thousand ones or whatever the number is, because I just don't think that's appropriate.
Well, I think that what we're, what we're looking at to do is to authorize staff to send out this request for bids to then bring back to us the number, you know, a number of qualified vendors to then look at and review and decide, you know, which vendor we may feel is the best vendor for our, that is going to do the best job. And then I guess maybe two or three of them, they may go off for proposals. Is that right?
No.
No, it's just this bid.
This is a one step process.
It's a one step process.
So if the, you know, majority of the council feels that, agrees with.
A, B, or C?
Yeah, well, the thing is that we would then eliminate the part about a guaranteed three thousand dollars per month, because that currently is part of the bid. And so that is something that, you know, if the council doesn't agree with that, you know, we can remove, because that will affect the percentage that they propose. So, so we are looking for that direction.
Councilman Widmer?
Sure. I have a couple of comments. You know, first off, as we're essentially starting off, so the first comment is not attached to comments with regards to what this says. And that is, is that we're not really sure what we're going after. There are some things that are still up in the air. We're kind of looking, you know, possibly we're looking for some ideas. And so in this case here, you know, I would suggest that maybe staff might consider, as opposed to doing a request for bids, or do more of a, you know, an RFI, where we would get input from different people who do this type of thing. And we could then go through their ideas of how we potentially could structure it, what might be attractive to one supplier versus another supplier, and then see what they're going to go do. So that's one suggestion I'd like to at least have, have staff and city manager consider. Secondly, if we're going to stay with, going for a bid, I do have a couple of comments. I reviewed them with George. He suggested I bring them up. So first off, you know, back to some old things, there are certain obligations and timeframes and obligations that there needs to get done in a certain period of time. So my experience here, working with our, our staff and with all of our rules and things like that, that we need to make sure we're very clear upfront when we're doing an RFP, or an RFB. We need to put SLAs in here. What are the service levels we're expecting? They've got to be responsive to the community. This is not something we can put in something, you know, you're going to give us something back, you know, next week, or they can respond in three days or something. They've got to have some sort of penalties, liquidated damages with regards to maybe clawing back something. There should be some, since it's envisioned to be a three-year contract, I realize it's going to be a one-year contract with two years renewal, it's a three-year contract because that's, that's the way we're working it. So there needs to be some sort of, either a three-year fixed price, or I would recommend a benchmarking or price reviews. Hold on, I'll scroll forward. Going through some of the activities, I went through the list of the activities that you were actually asking this person to do. So some of these seem to be, one could imply reading it, that they're going to essentially set up an exclusive arrangement in the park. City Manager says that wasn't the case, but, but he did share that, you know, somebody could, might actually read it this way. And if I was, if I was reading this and responding to your bid, I would think I could be getting a percentage of these. And those things are, are in Section B, Part P is in Peter, coordinating the provision of goods and services such as rentals, flowers, catering, music, photography, and/or videography, security, cleanup, and disposal. So, so on first blush, you know, when we had the caterer before, a lot of the residents that were using it said they wanted to use their own caterer. And so I don't think we should be, if people are going to rent the park, you know, they should be able to pick in who they want and they shouldn't have to go through somebody else and pay an extra fee or, you know, a general contractor fee for somebody else to bring something new. So I think that those, those are things I'd like you to consider potentially to remove. There are some things in there that were in that section, but that are also in, in Section E, maintenance of facilities and equipment. And when I read that list of things, including clean above the interior of the building, doing the setups, to janitorial services, we already have suppliers that are doing that. We have partners, very good partners, as you know. MCE does things in the park for us. We have a janitorial service organization. And I don't think that we should be taking business away from our existing partners. You know, we want to have, you know, you should have things that are like a body of activities. That's how you get the maximum value out of it. So I think some of these things, as I mentioned to George earlier today, you know, we need to take those things out, because we need somebody to actually manage the park. We need somebody to make sure there's a schedule so that MCE then can give the list to Steve or go directly to MCE, however we want to go do it, so that the setups and the cleanups are done on time. So those things I think need to be considered. Lastly, every day in the paper, I read about some sort of embezzlement. And, and I don't think we should have a third party collecting fees and then, and then reporting on themselves. There's no oversight here. I just think that the collection of the fees, we're doing a good job here. We've got a great system with, that Robert and people before him have come and we get the check registers, we know what's coming in. It gets a tremendous amount of oversight, so we should never have the problems that the Mesquite District had, or even just the San Mateo Water District just recently had, where they lost $350,000 because somebody actually had a stroke and it was found in an audit two years later, that she had been stealing money. So I wouldn't want to find things going under the table, which, you know, I'm not putting, saying does happen or would happen with whoever we select, but, but it could. And so I think that kind of collecting the fees and things like that needs to really be thought of. And the reason I bring them up now is because of the fact that, that if we put something in here, they bid it, then you know, oftentimes in the past, we've been told that, no, you have to, you can't change this, okay? Or you can't change the revenue share. You can take the work away from them, but then you pay them the same amount, so that doesn't make any sense. So let's get it right before we send it out. The last comment, fortunately, is the $3,000. I don't agree with paying a monthly stipend with one exception. You know, as we've talked about earlier, I think as Steve has brought this up, and Mike, I believe you have as well, that occasionally, if they're going to, may have to make some investment in the early days to, to get, you know, get things started, like with regards to the weddings. So there may not be any revenue in the early two or three months. So there should be a set period of time, maximum, where we might say, you know, as long, if your revenues are below a certain level, we'll give you so much or something. But that would only last for three or six months as opposed to, I mean, this is thirty-six thousand dollars, you know, times three, right? So, so I really do think that, you know, I wouldn't want to pay, you know, over a hundred thousand dollars, have it, you know, go for, potentially for nothing. And I think that those are, so I'd like to see some modifications and a decision on that, RFI versus RFB. And if you're going to go with the RFB with these changes in it before we vote on it.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Let's make that part easy. The, we're stuck with the purchasing ordinance that Mr. Widmer and I did a lot of work on. It does not allow RFIs or RFQs or a whole bunch of other things that would be allowed under other purchasing systems. Ours allows for RFPs for professional services and bids.
Okay, then let's get it right. I know that we could do an RFQ. That's kind of what I would think. If we're going to go out to a vendor, a vendor, we want to know who the best vendor is. I want to know what their qualifications are, and then I want to look at that, you know, what kind of management they've done in the past. And then, based on that, then we, then we get down to, you know, all of this other stuff. As, but I, I don't know, I think, but we can't do that with our purchasing.
Let me change the ordinance.
Well, you know, and, and actually, the driver on a request for bid was, was really from, you know, one of the things the council has consistently asked us is, is this going to be, you know, what is going to, what's the comparison of revenue versus expenditure?
Right.
And of course, we don't really know. The market's going to drive future revenue. What we have on the revenue side, though, is history. And, but, but we don't know on the expenditures. And so that's why we want to get firm bids. So, because that's going to be part of this process of reporting back that based on those bids, we can give you a more definitive financial review. Because as the city manager stated earlier, you know, the council hasn't made any, to Mr., to Councilmember Dobbie's question, they really haven't given us firm direction to go do it. So, but the one last piece that we've heard is, you know, what is the financial, you know? And is it going to be worth it? And, you know, if we open the park back up, is the revenue?
For events.
Yeah, for, for events, is there going to be that financial benefit? So that was really the driver for going out and getting bids, so we can get more definitive costs.
So to answer your question about the $3,000 a month, I mean, if we kind of go with this and have them do some maintenance and supervise the park and be there and manage the park, I mean, for that amount of money, I think that that would, as a minimum, I mean, that would cover that. And then their fee on top of, that's, that's in lieu of their fee. It's a, it's a minimum three thousand. If they make more than three thousand with their event percentages, then they don't get the three thousand.
Well, that's kind of a middle ground. I mean, you know, just thinking about Councilmember Dobbie's and Councilmember Widmer and your comments, you know, actually, it isn't a bad thought to just provide them, you know, that three thousand, that guarantee for maybe the first three or four months. Because there is going to be that startup cost. For our requirements, we're requiring them to have someone there physically 20 hours per week.
Right.
And, and the way we've scheduled this and structured this is, you know, hopefully having a contract awarded and them starting up on January 1st, so that they have full benefit of an entire year of events. But those first few months, there really isn't going to be a lot of events. So, you know, that, that, you know, that really is kind of an interesting thought of just only providing this guarantee for the first three or four months. And then from that point on, their revenue is going to be based on.
Their success.
On, on the success and their, and the amount of bookings.
Yeah, the other thing you might want to do, and I think I'm getting it from Councilmember Widmer. Widmer, is perhaps, since remember, this is a very odd bid in that it does have weighted factors. But if you put in there a minimum of up to $3,000 a month, if somebody is really hungry and wants to, you know, because there's not going to be a pent-up demand when they open the park on day one. It's going to take a while for the word to get out. But if that person wanted to basically absorb that cost themselves, then give them a competitive advantage because 45% is compensation and that would be something...so, if you wanted to do that, that's kind of a cross between Mike's point, which is a good one, and if you did it for 90 days up to $3,000 a month, not everybody's going to come in at $3,000 a month because they want to get some kind of a...something that differentiates them from the other people.
Yeah, I recognize that. So, I, you know, I suggested, and then Steve pointed that out before. But there were the other issues that I would like us really to come together on that I think we wouldn't want somebody to bid. And I wouldn't want to bid something and then suddenly somebody says, well, we don't want you to do those things. Or if I was MCE, I'd say, hey, I had my heart set on doing those things. I thought I was going to get that revenue and you're giving it away. So, and then there's the financial control, so...
Can we talk about that part of what you were talking about?
True.
Because I think that in Section E, it says responsible for cleaning outdoor areas used during events and setup. I don't think it's like they're...it's just talking about, is that you were doing that in Section E, your maintenance, okay?
Yeah.
For setup, operations, and event cleanup of the interior of the main house. And so if they are hosting and organizing an event, that's going to be part of their deal to do. I mean, I think, and we can assign MCE a lot more work to do.
Can I make the suggestion?
Sure.
That in that particular area that we do a retention, so a clean-up deposit, so therefore, if we have to do the cleaning, then we already have the money instead of trying to chase the tail? So, therefore...
That's on the renter's side, right?
It should be on the event, yeah. And that should be incorporated into the fee that is charged.
Right.
But in terms of who's doing the cleanup and who's responsible for the cleanup, maybe between Mike and Steve, we could talk about that just a moment.
And our intent was, we didn't believe we're removing any work away from MCE. You know, what the intent was, we wanted to make this a total turnkey. And from an accountability standpoint, we felt that was the best way to do it. Now, the things that MCE will not be doing, you know, with a new vendor is really that setup and takedown, which they were never doing before anyway. The only reason why they're doing this is because we lost our vendor.
Right.
And also, we thought that, you know, it would also encourage good utilization of the vendor's staff who was going to be onsite. Because there is, you know, I mean, setup is what happened...it just isn't, you know, we just felt that it would be more economical and it would make more sense. And again, you know, we didn't view this as taking anything away from MCE.
Yeah. Personally, I think that the way they get the park, they return the park. So, that way, we have less negative effect.
Maybe they're renting.
And also, you know, remember, there'll be events on Saturdays, Sundays, Mondays. They'll have to do...MCE's not here on those days, so they need to clean up after one to set up for the other. It behooves them to have it cleaned.
Right.
Because they're selling the place and, you know, they want repeat business also. So, you know, that type of partnership, you know, them keeping the place clean, them keeping the windows clean helps them more than helps anybody else.
Absolutely.
And currently, we don't have the janitorial maintenance done for the pavilion.
Right.
And we didn't before either because that's all done only for rentals. And so, when we get ready to rent it out now, the guys, we might rent the pavilion for two weeks. Before the rental happens, the guys will go in and clean the restrooms. We have the event and then they clean up afterwards.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's the way it's run now and that's the way it'll be run then. But we want them to do it because that's their schedule and their thing to do. We don't want them having to pick up the phone and say, hey, get your guy out here to clean the restroom, you know, here, my event ends here. So, that's why we want them to do those types of things. It just makes it clear. Just redo the list in E and make sure that they feel, you know, I mean, you work with the MCE guys all the time. And I do think that there's some overlap. Takedown and setup is here. Just verify. MCE will continue to do the setups and takedowns for the no-fee events such as the ACIL event the other night. There is no charge for that. It's a town credit event. So, MCE will continue to do those types of events, the setups for the Park and Rec Commission and the foundation meetings. They will continue to do those. They just won't do the, you know, the meetings, the social events and those kinds of things.
Councilmember Dobbie?
I think we also have to address the exclusivity because, you know, some of the residents may want to organize things themselves, organize their music, organize their food.
And that's all part of the contract that, you know, the resident would make with the event coordinator.
We don't want to pay any money, overcharge for that.
I think this is kind of soup to ness, right?
Well, yes, and, you know, a number of your comments, Councilmember Widmer, we agree with. And so, we just need to clarify then. For instance, there was never any intention that whoever the selected vendor was, was going to have exclusive rights to catering or anything else. And so, we will make it very clear, you know, we will clarify that and have a statement to say that. And as far as any fees, their own, the only fees they can charge are the fees that the town establishes. They can't come up with their own extra fees, so, you know, we shouldn't be concerned about that. And then as far as...
Auditing controls.
The auditing controls, right. That's another one where it was always the intent that the vendor would never touch any form of money, either cash, checks, whatever. All that would go directly to the town. All the vendor would be doing was showing, managing, and booking. But as far as any type, and so we will also add some language to reinforce that as well. The one comment that you made that, you know, we would like to get council direction on because it does, it is kind of a different philosophy, is really that fixed fee as opposed to a percentage of fee. And so, that's something that, you know, we can do it either way. And so, you know, but we do need some direction on that.
My feeling on that is that I don't mind guaranteeing a fixed fee for, say, three months as being suggested, balanced against what they bring in. In other words, if they bring in more than $3,000, we don't pay anything. But, you know, for the first two or three months, I wouldn't object to something so they can get started, but I certainly don't want to start paying them on a long-term basis. They should be making that kind of money from the...